And where like the decorations?
And where did you order?
We just ordered at the store.
I just have my hat on.
We're in order and we just like the week before went to the store and.
If you go to the dollar store now, it's a lot cheaper and there's more of it.
Okay.
We. Have we been, we currently keep kept or gone through it, there's banners and so a bunch of stuff in these boxes. You just go out and ask them.
And that is why I have a question. Okay. Well.
I think some of them are still around. There's some of them.
I hope they don't sign this system. It's all box.
We don't work, there should be use.
Okay.
Okay. It's six o'clock. Here's our budget session discussion, and I'm gonna let Cody take the reins unless we need to do anything else.
That's great. Um, do you want me to show you on the screens too? I threw it in Dropbox or the mayor threw it in Dropbox, but.
Printed it. I hate printing.
I know. Like you must have really wanted to look at it.
Where did you go?
I think.
Yes.
You can verify still in mouse.
There. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask at any time. So you can see, I just put together, I forgot to throw these in the tentative, but you can see here's the different funds and the different revenues associated with them. So this is our current year budgets. This is next year's budgets. So you can see the changes.
That's the one in Pleasantview, we did the Pleasantview right there, right?
Right. It's to cover that anyway.
Right. So it's not, from what I know of it, it's not like an official CDA because we're not getting tax increment. We're putting about twenty five thousand dollars a year in there. And so we have some money set aside that we can use in that. And so right now we've got about a hundred and seventy five thousand. Restriction, right. Um, which is good because a lot of times those RDAs have a lot of restrictions and stuff. And so we can kind of use it for what we would like. So, and then there's the various funds for expenses. You can see they're pretty similar. The allocation and I'll go over all the changes. For the general fund, you can see here's the differences in the revenues. And then the chart kind of shows what percentage things are. So you can see sales tax is a big chunk, which is okay. Um, a lot of times they talk about this being like a three-legged stool or a multi-legged stool. And you can see we're pretty balanced. Like we do have some couple of big chunks here, but we are pretty stable. It's not like one of these has taken up seventy five, eighty percent of it. So that's good. Um, and then here's our different departments. You'll notice that like we talked about last time, we did create a new building department. Um, and so that's why that says that is because it's. Right. So we basically moved that over here. And then the other big change with that is the ARPA funds. We've spent some of that money on the public works facility. So what's left is, or what I've got budgeted is what's left. So, and you see, you can kind of see the difference in the departments. Um, I just added some notes here so you can kind of see it as we talk. Make this a little bigger so hopefully it's easier to see. So this is the twenty twenty two prior year. Here's our current year budget. Here's our current year actual as of April when I ran this. And then our current year projected. This is done by the software, so it's not a hundred percent. So I don't want to get too caught up on it. But you can see like our property taxes, if you remember, we just get the growth over the certified tax rate of last year. So I'm guessing it's our growth is going to be under that four hundred thousand. And we always want to be a little high there because if we're low, then it's like, well, we don't really need as much as we're going to get. And so I try to overshoot this a little bit. And then I just adjust it with sales tax in the final budget. We get this number from the county about July or June eighth. And so then I'll hurry and make a change before we do the final budget adoption. I did pull up the franchise fees. Um, like we talked about here not too long ago, we're doing really well on those.
I didn't expect it.
Right. Remember, we kind of had no idea. We didn't know if it'd be a hundred grand or five hundred grand. And so it's kind of in the middle, which is great. And so I did use the increase there to offset like that new plow track and some additional sidewalk projects that Nate and Dave wanted some money for. So I'll talk about that in a minute. And then Nate was telling me, he's like, man, our building permits are like tanking, like we've had hardly any. So I pulled those down quite a bit. Just looking forward on that. The local option sales tax road money, I increased it about the same percentage as the regular sales tax. The COVID money, the ARPA funds that we have available, um, we've got about five hundred and twenty five thousand left. And so that would largely go towards that public works facility. If you remember, I think the engineer estimate was like six fifty, six seventy five. So that'll cover the majority of that. And then those will be spent, which is great because we need to get those spent by like March of twenty twenty four. So.
I see. I mean, we have rolling those like back or when we turn that thing.
If we don't spend it. So I talked to Nate about that and the mayor and Nate's like, we'll get it spent. I'm like, all right, well, good. Let's just get it spent. And we technically have that in this year's budget too. So if they really got going on stuff, we could pay for it out of the current year budget, or we can pay for it out of twenty twenty four. We're coming out of both. Um, the park fees, we are having a little higher attendance over at the rec center with rentals and stuff. So I did increase both of those. Um, and I'm really just hitting changes here. And then our interest earnings, you probably noticed that personally, the market's up, right? Interest rates, the Fed rates up to about seven percent. So the PTIF is finally like performing pretty well. And so we're starting to get a significant amount of money in where before we were getting like hardly anything. So that's really nice too. Um, that kind of saves us, I think, from doing like a property tax increase because you can see compared to a couple of years ago, we're probably going to be like eighty grand more in the general fund.
Yeah, I guess everyone complains about it, but then if you're on the flip side of it.
It's nice. Yeah.
On the sewer board, we were talking about that. It's a, it's a huge chunk of change.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Like what we happen to make. So.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Explain this a little bit. So is this the increase in interest rates in general, which also means in like as safe as you can, for instance?
Right. So the city, we participate in the Public Treasuries Investment Fund, which is basically a state pool of funds. And we get like a long-term rate, even though it's a short-term investment. So we can pull our money out whenever we want. But because there's so many people, including the state of Utah, who are invested in that, we get higher yields. And so it follows the market pretty close. And so before we were getting like two point seven, five percent interest, now we're up to over five percent or around five percent. So the, those balances we have on hand are really helping us.
Other side of increased interest rates.
Right.
I remember back when, okay, a loan was over twelve percent, but your bank account got over twelve percent.
Right.
That doesn't happen anymore.
No. So it's bad like if personally you go to buy a car, right? And you have to get a loan. But for the city, it's actually a good thing when we have cash on hand. Um, special fund revenue. So really a lot of this is just an accounting entry. So we have to budget, if you remember, so that we keep our fund balance under the thirty five percent. So I budget a transfer. So that's what a million dollars of that is. The rest of that is rollovers. So that's the park impact fee money that I estimated would have on hand, the classy road money and the local option highway money that we'll have on hand. So that's what that one point seven is.
Is that just kind of then just the rainy day fund or?
The million.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, budget, that revenue, but.
So if you remember, the thirty five percent is that we can keep, so we can keep thirty five percent of our annual revenues in the general fund. Anything over that, we get in trouble with the state if we have more money than that. And that is the rainy day fund. And then we can transfer anything above that. Yep.
So that's kind of like, it's kind of the saving, which means we're sitting really well.
We are. And we really have that, that rainy day funds really in two places because we can keep thirty five percent of our revenues in the general fund. And then we can keep an unlimited amount of money in the capital projects fund. So basically what we do, what I try to do is maximize the thirty five percent. And then put anything extra in the capital projects fund. So that's what that millions for, but we don't have to transfer the million. We can transfer a dollar or we can transfer zero if we need to. We just have to have it there because it's also a requirement that we budget for transfers. So I basically just make an entry to transfer a million and to use a million and then that's to zero.
But if we can keep it in there, if it's on the budget, then we can keep it in there gaining interest.
Right, right, right. And then we don't have to do a budget amendment at the end of the year, hopefully, unless like we've done really well. And it's like, oh no, we're going to have too much money. Then we have to bump that up like with ARPA funds or whatever the case may be. So as far as, so that's the revenues for the general fund. I don't know if you have any questions, like not a lot of changes. Um, for our, all of our departments. So I tried to highlight them all green. So we'll just do the normal stuff for the employees. So Andrea did the survey per the, the policy. And so she went out and got the new rates. Everybody's just getting their step increase. And so I figured out what those would be and allocated them to the various departments. And then with the increase, there was no changes in URS rates. There was a small increase in the city's health insurance premium of about four, four and a half percent. And so I took those into account in these budgets for the employees. So the only change that would need to happen here is I haven't changed anything. So like if you guys change the personnel policy drastically and we need to do something budgetarily to so that we have the funds for that, then we might need to change something. But right now, based upon what we're doing now, the, the money should be there in all these accounts. So.
If, if we were to choose over the next, I don't know, months, years, whatever, to increase staff.
Right.
How would we do that?
So probably the easiest, so like say you wanted to hire a couple of new people. So probably the easiest would be, we'd probably need to do like a property tax increase, or say we get a big development and it brings in a lot of property tax. Then we would have the revenues to offset those expenditures, right? So like right now, if we don't have any more money, we'd need to do, we'd need to find some money to hire somebody new. So, or we'd need to take money from somewhere else.
So with what you, with interests and things, you don't think that we need to do any type of tax increases?
No, I'll go over that right here in just a minute. Um, like I said, the other day or two weeks ago, I was able with the increase in the franchise tax and stuff. I didn't even put that new tough in there. So if you guys would like to add that, we can add it. Um, and we can talk about that in a minute when we get to the highways. But right now, if we stay the same.
I mean, I talked to lots of people about taxes and everything else. And when everyone, you know, it's, hey, we have to set our budgets. We have to live by them. I mean, I, I feel like if we can make it work and we're making it work, and I don't feel like we're scrimping anywhere. And I don't, I just don't see a reason to say, oh, we just want to increase taxes so we can increase taxes and have more in our rainy day fund. So that's just kind of where I stand, talking with people and seeing where we're at. So.
But how longer we go without having to raise them?
Yeah.
And still be in a good financial situation?
Yeah.
I'm either one of them.
One thing to consider though is also, as we grow, we have roads to widen, bridges to build, bridges to replace. How are we gonna, we, we need a basically a financial plan for all of that. You know, where does that fit into all of this? Because there are some bridges we need to replace. There might be bridges we need to build if we wanted, according to our general plan, we have several crossings that go over the canal. And we're going to have to build a bridge across those. Um, you know, all of these roads that we think we'd like.
Tough though doesn't let you use it for new construction, correct? It's only maintenance.
I think it's more maintenance, but I don't think it's super restrictive. Because it is, it's not like classy road and some of that, that it has all that legislation tied to it. We can use it for road projects. So I think we could use it for new. I can do a little more research on it, but I'm pretty sure I can't think of any restrictions that I know of on that.
The reason I bring that up is, you know, that's really our focus in saying, okay, we do have these ongoing projects. I mean, personally, I like to see that tough stay, start low and kind of stay low.
Sure.
I mean, but you know, let that build up. But at the same time, we can only use it for that, meaning we, someone doesn't come back in three years from now and be like, ooh, we have all this money. Let's use it for a pool out back, which I'm like, I'm not in favor of the pool. We were planning on roads, so.
Right.
That's the only reason I like the tough versus just raising property taxes and putting into a general fund.
Do we have like a transportation master plan that kind of?
In our general plan.
All of that.
That plus we have the engineered estimate of.
Yeah. So in order to do a tough, one of the requirements is you have to have like a, a plan and a whole, I mean, we did that whole report. I don't know if it's still recent enough to count. I mean, it's almost like you have to do an impact fee study. But you have to do one for transportation, identify that.
And we did that. We paid Jones to do that.
But you know, they recommended anything up to ten dollars. And I'm sitting here thinking, you know, I would start low like a dollar or two dollars.
Three.
And you know, three at the most and do that if we had large projects, we need to start funding and saving for, but.
Well, as, as an example, I, so and I'll be reporting on this later as well. Um, in the Transportation Subcommittee at Wake Forest, uh, West Haven came in because they got some funding for some road projects, right? Well, they came back in because the costs have increased and asked for over eight hundred thousand more. Because the costs have gone up that much. And it's one of those things makes you think, okay, we have all these plans for all this stuff, but you know, is everything growing faster than we can save up for it? Or?
Well, at the same time though, I think we're going to see a lot of that growth slow down for the next few years. I don't think it's going to be as quick as we thought it was two years ago.
That's true too.
So I, I think that we do have that on our time on our advantage. And talking with Dave Bunderson about these numbers, you know, I, I know these are engineering numbers based off statistics and stuff. He really, and I agree with him, really feels like with what we've done, we're a lot farther ahead in better maintenance and load conditions than this report lays it out to be. So because he does feel like we, I mean, we're better shaped than this. So as we talk.
His biggest concern when we met a couple of weeks ago is the bridges. And so I text him today again, just because we talked about a bunch. I'm like, so how many bridges do we have? So we have three. And he estimated that it's between like two point four and four million dollars a bridge to replace those. And so his thoughts on like having a tough is if we implemented it, that we could generate money and it would stay set aside just for roads. And that we would begin to have some money that if the opportunity came along to get like a Wake Forest grant or something, that we would have some matching funds available to help with that. But that's up to you guys and what you'd like to do. This is the one page from that tough and the different levels that.
The reality is we implement this, this doesn't have to be tied because we're really, we're talking about implementing that as projected to get some of these big projects done, not what we need to do in the next year. So we wouldn't necessarily need to even bring that into the discussion now. It's something we can have public hearings and get input on. And then if we decide to do it, we can do it.
For sure. And technically for the tough, I don't think you even have to have a public hearing because it's not a tax. It's just a fee. So it just needs to be approved in like the consolidated fee schedule.
To have a public open house, explain what you're doing and why and those kind of things.
Why are you charging me three bucks for, towards these roads? We have roads, but then show them.
But like I said, we also, I mean, I'm not saying that this is totally off base. I mean, we do have roads and it's a lot cheaper to maintain them than it is to build new. So I don't, I'm not saying this report is bad. I just, sometimes they use the standard numbers that they call from generic reports and not necessarily where we're at and how we're keeping up on things. So.
Right. Yeah, for sure. And we can always bond too. I mean, like that's obviously probably not the first thing we want to do, but if the right grant came along, right? We can come up.
Use the tough to pay back the bond or pay back the bond.
Exactly. So we could like implement the tough to, at whatever level we needed to generate that payment. So we have a lot of options. But yeah, right now I don't have any tax increases and I'll go over the, I just have like one fee increase. So we got the five twenty five.
Guess what our rate, is our rate going to go down again?
So I would assume it is. So we don't know what the rate is. We won't know until like June eighth. So if home values went up, which I don't, I don't know if they did or not. So if they went up, then the rate went down. If it stayed the same, then the rate price stayed the same.
It dropped a little bit, which I almost lean more towards the fact that they probably dropped a little bit.
Probably.
The rate's going to go up.
The only bad thing is, is did the county like undervalue? That's probably what they're going to argue. Like we undervalued it last year. So even though they're like tapering off, we're still under. I don't know.
Because we didn't, didn't, our la, our rate for last year wasn't at three point something.
I think that's right. Yeah.
The year before was four point something.
Because they, if you remember, they guarantee us a dollar amount.
Dollar amount like three hundred and thirty or.
Three forty or whatever it is. So they just figure out, they figure out what all of our houses are worth. And then they figure out, okay, you need three hundred and forty thousand. So then they punched in their calculator and come out with the rate. So.
About a hundred and fifteen and a half.
Yep, yep.
Or at least it was.
Yep. Yeah. So we'll have to see what that is. It should probably be pretty consistent. If you remember, last year was kind of an anomaly because the commercial property didn't go up very much, but the residential did. So it kind of shifted the burden. But this year, I hope it stays flat. So the court, we really just have some changes in wages there. I talked to Andrea. She's like, no, we're good. Building. So here's this new building department. So this is mainly Nate's wages. And just as a reminder, the reason we're kind of doing this is one, so then Nate has specific money for his stuff. And two, the state auditor's office wants us to track building permits a lot like impact fees. So basically they're restricted just for building inspections. And so that's why we're separating that. We'll have to watch this. We might need to increase staff. We might even want to change the allocation right now because I think we have his wage split fifty fifty. And if it gets where we're collecting like a lot in building permits and it's like, well, he's really doing seventy five percent inspections and twenty five percent other stuff, then we'd want to change that. Um, but for right now, I think that's probably a good place to start. And it'll make it real easy to show the state, look, this is what we're spending. Um, the general government buildings, I think you asked about this the other day, like what this was. This is some of our public work staff wages. And that's kind of the wages we allocate to take care of the facilities of the city. And so that's a lot of what this department is.
Employees that split.
They wear so many hats that.
It'd be nice, you know, like, okay, these employees are here, these are here, but really it's this employee is here, here, here and here. So.
Right. And so we just kind of take like a best guess because otherwise Lindsay would like strangle everybody if every pay period, she is like, oh, who plowed the roads this week? And she had to change everything. So it's just kind of like, well, as a whole, this is probably pretty close.
I hope no one plowed the roads this week.
I hope not either.
We're for it now again.
Hopefully we're done with that till like December, right?
Right.
And so public safety, so.
And we're out of salt.
So Nate's wages were right here. And so we moved them up. That's why that's now zero. Um, you can see our contract, if you remember from the, the county, actually dropped a little bit. One change I do need to make a lot before our final budget is that looking at this, we need a little more money here for our animal control. And so I'll pull that line item up a little bit. Yeah.
Okay, why is the planning commission expenses in the public safety budget?
That's just where they've been. And part of it is, and we can move that if you want.
I have no, I have no feelings, but.
I would, if nobody else has an answer, I would say because it's looked at that they are the ones that kind of make sure that the building falls within like the safety requirements. And so that's why it was deemed to be public safety. I think that's why Nate's wages were in there too. Because like, but we can.
We don't know where to put it, public safety.
Yeah.
But we can create another department too, or we could even move those up into like building if we wanted.
It's the reimbursement part of it. Because technically they aren't paid, right? They're reimbursed.
I think that is more for like if they go to trainings and stuff, but is what I think.
Well, that's the planning commission expenses.
There's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement is actually what they get on their monthly, right?
That probably is right. Yeah.
That makes more sense.
I think it actually has something to do with state requirements that they're not paid. There, it's a reimbursement they get.
Right. For a while it used to be that they couldn't, and you guys too, you couldn't be employees. And then the IRS came in and said, no, like you gotta, so that's changed. So we can change that title. Now everybody has to be employees, but. Okay.
So we can, I mean.
The planning commissions. Okay. It's priced low enough, we're probably fine.
Um, and then I just had, what's the mitigation plan?
I don't know what we have that account for. I've just, everybody's just been keeping it the same. So.
As you can see here.
We got money in there for it.
Well, and we haven't been spending it.
No.
We're not mitigating whatever it is we're going to get.
Well, that's what I was thinking. That's the mitigation plan that we're working with the county and the state for, um, for issues, any issues that would come up. So.
So is that just a reserve fund in case we do have flooding or some kind of mitigation that we can, have some funds to fall for?
An emergency, it's an emergency plan mitigation fund.
Get bags and sand.
And we.
We have a problem fund if you just leave the same stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just like that. But we can change the title. If you want to change it from reimbursement to something else, we can change that. That's just fine. Yeah. So with highways and public improvement, so you can see the main changes here is I increased this line item to fifty thousand. Dave and Nate. One change I do need to make a lot before our final budget is that looking at this, we need a little more money here for our. Um, animal control, and so I'll pull that line item up a little bit, yeah. That's just where they've been, eh, eh, part of it is, and we can move that if you want. I would, if nobody else has an answer, I would say because it's looked at, that they are the ones that kinda make sure that. The building falls within like the safety requirements, and so that's why it was deemed to be public safety, I think that's why Nate's wages were in there too. Cause like, but we can.
We don't know where to put it, public safety.
We can create another department too, or we could even move those up into like building if we wanted.
Because technically they aren't paid, right, they're reimbursed?
I think that is more for like if they go to trainings and stuff, but is what I think. There's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement is actually what they get on their monthly, right?
That probably is right, yeah.
I think it actually has something to do with state requirements, that they're not paid, there, it's a reimbursement they get.
For a while it used to be that they couldn't, and you guys too, you couldn't be employees. And then the IRS came in and said, no, like you gotta, so that's changed, so we can change that title. Now everybody has to be employees, but. Okay, we. The planning commissions. Okay, yeah, it's priced low enough, we're probably fine. I don't know what we have that account for, I've just, everybody's just been keeping it the same.
We got money in there for it.
Well, and we haven't been spending it.
No.
We're not meditating, whatever it is we're gonna get.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that's the mitigation plan that we're working with the county and the state for, um, for. Issues, any issues that would come up, so.
So is that just a reserve fund in case we do have flooding or some kind of mitigation that we can.
That makes sense.
Emergency, it's an emergency plan mitigation fund.
Get bags and sand.
But we can change the title, if you wanna change it from reimbursement to something else, we can change that, that's just fine. So with highways and public improvement, so you can see. The main changes here is I increased this line item to fifty thousand, Dave and Nate wanted a hundred grand to work on sidewalk stuff. Um, so with the offset going back to the franchise taxes, we were able to pull that up. And then this is how much money I estimated would have on hand for classy road projects. And local option stuff, I don't think in talking to Dave, I, I don't think he plans on doing that much in projects.
I don't think we're that high this year, so I think some of that, like you say, he's been kinda budgeting for future stuff, but keeping it in there, so.
That's what I was gonna ask you about, the sidewalk maintenance and repair and the sidewalk expansion project. Cause you know, we've got a twenty-five thousand dollar budget in there, of which only. Six hundred and one, thirty-nine hundred in the other has been expended, does that roll over or?
It does, some of that does roll over, I think, the last meeting, remember you guys approved a bunch of stuff? I think there was some sidewalk in that that you approved.
Years ago, we did as much sidewalk until we ran out of funds and then they stopped, I mean, they have a long list of projects. So I was under the impression, yeah, towards the end of the summer, they just start doing as much as they can, and then once the funds run out, then they stop. And then they start to get an extra.
And this is where our budget year stinks, cause like, well, you know, like you, we're not as big as UDOT, so it's not like we have projects that go year round. So like, they kinda have to guess, like, are we gonna get stuff done before June, are we gonna wait till July? Um, and is it gonna cross years?
We do have a big list of, I mean, seventy-five thousand wanting to cover all of the sidewalk projects on there, so.
Well, that's one of the things they were talking about, if we were, if we were to increase staff, you could actually have a sidewalk crew. Could actually in the long run be cheaper than.
Yeah, the only problem is, is that's just so seasonal, but.
Yeah, well, they could also clear the sidewalk. There's other duties for them, but that was just some of the discussions that they've had, just sharing what they like to talk about.
Right, okay, so that's highways, so I did throw that, that tough in there, but we already talked about that. Um, for parks, you can see there's just the wages and the benefits.
And I was wondering, so we've got the parks budget and the rec budget, who comes out of parks and who comes out of recreation?
So parks is like taking care of the parks, and recreation is like playing on the parks or in the rec center.
So because salaries are.
So out of park, it is kinda split, so out of parks, I don't remember what public works employee it is. Um, but it's public works employees that are in parks, and.
Mowing and the sprinklers and all of that kinda stuff.
And that, yeah, and that's what that seasonal wage is right there, is so that we have people to help mow and string trim and all that jazz. The recreation, like that's Mick and the people to run the, the programs. And if you remember, we split that off, I think last year, and so that's why. Some of these, maybe it was two years ago, but we changed that because before there was, they were kinda like. Commingled a little bit and like baseball and stuff I think was in parks, and so we tried to split that up so that now it's like taking care of parks. And like recreation separate, so. So you can see not a lot of changes there, I do have some park impact fee money, I do have a hundred thousand dollars just budget of, of grant money. I don't think we have any grants slated, but so then if we get it, we don't necessarily have to do, um, a budget amendment. And then that is about what we had on hand with what I estimated we had on hand versus what we're gonna collect for twenty twenty-four, so. We would have some park impact fee money, like we talked about in our meeting a couple of weeks ago, that. If we updated like the impact fee analysis, would have some money there that we could possibly do like some playground equipment or something like that if it met the requirements.
Yeah, I got lots of that.
How much were they?
Three hundred thousand-ish.
Yeah.
It was a pretty nice playground up to the.
Yeah, well, and, and part of that is, you know, um, our match, so. We need to be able to plan for.
Remember, I couldn't remember what the prices came in at.
So on that park development impact fee, is it better to? So you're saying hold that over, so then we have that hundred and eighty thousand plus the hundred thousand as a match?
So the hundred and eighty thousand, we can only spend on stuff that's been identified in that impact fee analysis as available projects. So if we get a project on that list, that then we could qualify for like a ramp grant. Then we can use that money for a match, if not, then that hundred and eighty thousand just needs to be spent on whatever's on our impact fee analysis. So if there was a year that like, you're like, hey, we don't wanna do as much sidewalk, but we wanna do more in parks and we wanna have a bigger match, then. What we could do is we could reduce like that increase we just made to sidewalks and put more money here in like this park grant. Um, you guys kinda just have to tell me and let me know and we can move money around.
So does it make sense to extend it on about something identified in there or hold it over?
Um, it really just depends on you guys' priorities. We have to spend those money, that funds, that funding within six years, um.
That's the thing with impact fees, if you charge them within six years, if you haven't spent it, you have to give it back, so.
So they, like, we have to keep moving on those unless you have like a big project identified, or like if we spent. If we would have, like, if we wouldn't have got as much grant funding out on, um, the Smith Family Park, you can actually create a deficit and then you can pay yourself back. But you have to spend them, so we could.
Is the key that we need to identify the projects that we want to fund.
That's what I think.
Put it in the plan.
And then if it'll meet things.
Tell, then we want more parks and more stuff.
Right.
Say, we wanna playground here, or we wanna redo a playground here. Then it's, it's available for that, and it's easier for us to, um, go for grant funding, but we also need to be able to. Uh, plan for those things and not get grant funding, cause that's not a guarantee, that's just a nice.
Right.
Sure, I mean, where does that, those impact fees come in, when do we collect those?
Usually with new building, on the building permit. Yep, and so just as a general, like, impact fees, you can kinda think of them, if you have like a crappy park. You can build a crappy park with impact fees, you can't charge the, the new people moving in. To, for like the end-all be-all park, and then all of our other parks are like, wah, wah. Or, but vice versa, if we have like top of the line parks, then we can charge a top of the line impact fee, and then.
Can you use, my understanding with impact fees? Yeah, maybe I'm wrong.
You can't really use them for repairs and maintenance, you can use them, so like if we're building a brand new park. Or like, like the triangle park, like we didn't have a park there, we're expanding our parks, then we can use impact fees. Like in Mountain View, it would be hard to use them to replace the playground equipment, unless we're like drastically upgrading and changing.
Because of.
Right, right.
But if we wanted to use it for like, say, pickleball parks that the heritage.
Then that's probably easier, cause that's kinda like park expansion, new stuff, or if we wanted to build.
Put in new playground equipment next to the old playground equipment and then happen to tear down the other.
As long as our engineers will sign off on it, then we're okay, but we.
It also has to be in our impact study.
Analysis, right, so like if you wanted to design like a new park and say, hey, we really wanna do these things. It'd be really advantageous to get it in the impact fee analysis and then use the impact fee analysis and the money we had. To then apply for grants, and we could use that together, that's how Smith Family Park really got built, right? Is we use a lot of impact fees, we use a lot of grant money, um.
And then how do we, so how do we update the impact fee analysis?
It's, we just call our engineers.
That can take, I mean, we just redid our impact fee study on like the sewer storm drain. I swear it took like a year and a half to do. Partly because they do their analysis, and then like it has to be certified by Zions Bank. And, cause they have to come up with these fees that we're gonna charge, and so it's a multi-step process, and went back and forth like three times and.
Through their load.
That's why you wanna make sure that everything you got identified in there is legit and real. Cause it's not something you wanna just do every six months.
No, and usually what you have too is like a capital facilities plan, so think of it as like a general plan. So usually it's like a twenty-year plan, and then your impact fee analysis is like a six to ten-year. Like picture of that plan, so. Usually the impact fee analysis is we do, cause we run out of projects, so then we kinda look at the capital facilities plan and pull new plans in and. And things, so.
You know, eh, if we look at our general plan, our brand-new general plan, it's identified several new potential parks. You know, and trails and roads and crossings, so it's like, you know. If we plan for this in our general plan, it's like, we've gotta kinda figure out how the hell we're gonna pay for all that.
But like you said, but they review us, and you can't just suddenly say, we wanna just add a massive trail system park to our city, and these new residents here are gonna pay for it.
Update the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, is they, that's why it's such a process, cause they have to say, no, this isn't reasonable, you can't do this. And throw that burden there.
Right, and it works really good, like if you look at St. George, I think they've built most of their parks with impact fees, cause they had a lot of nice parks, right? And then they've just exploded, so they were able to charge their new residents and, as they did, and build new facilities. So that basically you kinda have the same ratio of parks, if you will, as you did before, so. Um, senior center activities, just some increases there and like wages and benefits, recreation. We have to pay like FICA.
Okay.
And so that's it.
Are very misleading.
Well, when I saw that, I'm like, wait a minute.
They're not equivalent all the way through, but like, we still have a benefit line item there.
Gotcha, okay, that, that clears that up.
Recreation, just some changes in wages, the only other change we had here, I forgot to highlight it, is we had an account for everything but basketball. And it drove Andrea crazy, cause then she never knew where to put basketball stuff, so we created a new account, so there was.
Under holiday celebrations.
So it was a little easier.
Does the parade go on the holiday, feeding festival?
I believe that's correct.
But is it broken out? I can't remember what she said my budget was, I'll look.
It's a hundred dollars.
I think it's like eight hundred dollars, is what she said.
Yeah, we, that's what I was saying, we've been, I mean, it fluctuates a little bit, but it's been somewhere around that.
I didn't even know they paid some people to participate in the parade, so.
Kids, kids used to get like.
So young kids, I, she said like.
I know we've paid to like, you know, rent the big flag and do some of those other things, and we do little treats for the kids, I don't think we've ever paid people to be in it though.
Maybe they were like.
I think it was somebody.
Yeah, we've done awards and.
Yeah, for the, the, the bestest float ever type thing.
We've done those kinda things, but yeah, I don't think it's paid to certain groups to come.
I thought she said like the color guard.
And we may have to, sometimes I don't know if it's pay or it's a donation. I think the flags, cause I think the flags are that way, it's not necessarily we pay for it, but we donate money to the foundation. Well, that's how we get.
No, I'm at the flag.
Well, it's changed though, because.
I got the flag, sorry, this is a side note.
Yes, but that's because the donation was made already differently.
Okay.
Um, but there was a company that donated some stuff, and that's why we've been told we can have the flag. But that's generally how some of that works.
I think it was my.
So yes, I don't know if it's paid as much as, you know, so but like the color guard and that stuff, like you make a donation to that foundation, and they let us use those things, so.
Sorry.
So this million dollars here, this is just the offset to that transfer, so this is where it would go. Um, if we have leftover money, and then I increase this contribution of the capital asset replacement fund. By a hundred and twenty-five thousand, just thinking that if we order one of those big trucks, it's probably gonna take two to three years to get. So by using that franchise tax like incrementally for two or three years, we'll fully fund it by the time we get it. And have to pay for it, and so that's really the general fund and the changes that we had. Um, if you don't have any questions, I'll keep going, so this is what. Um, Counselor Farron was talking about a few minutes ago, so this is that CDA fund. You can see, we don't have tons of money in there, so the interest isn't gonna be huge, but we are collecting a little more in interest, and then we are contributing twenty-five thousand dollars a year. From the general fund, so that's where we have like that hundred and seventy-five thousand available. Um, so not a lot going on there, but if we got to the point that you guys were ready to start spending some of that money, then we probably just need to come in and. Um, do a budget amendment here so that we could have a line item to spend that.
Types of things, cause this is mostly for a designated area, right, but could it be for?
Money came in and said, hey, can we use? Money, incremental money to build a road and, you know, that kinda thing, so it's, and then this would be funding that we could help with that project.
Okay, so when they, when they're like, what can you do to help us? This, this is where they're.
We can help you with this, but right now you can, we can buy lunch for the guys one day.
Yeah, pizza and donuts.
You get a square yard of concrete.
Yeah, or like a lot of times you'll pay for signage or something, so maybe we could pay for their sign, we might have enough money to do that.
Cause I know tho- those are questions that we get, or, you know, what's the city, what, what are you gonna do for us?
We don't really have it set up that way, but I mean, you would have to, the only other thing we could do is, um, what's it called, with the. The taxes, where they go around all the.
So you do like a tax increment hearing, right, and.
That, that's really what I see a lot of people getting the benefit from, is they go to the RDA and get reduced tax rates and.
Right, and so just like a one-minute summary of how that works, and where that my benefit is, is like down here by Amazon. If we were gonna do something big there, you come in and identify an area, and then you go to all the taxing entity boards, and you used to have to do that and get approval from them. All together, now you can go to them one by one and whoever approves it, so we'd go to like the mosquito abatement district, the sewer district, the schools.
I don't think they did it for Amazon, everything on the other side they did.
They did, they did, for, they did it for Amazon, they did it for Sierra, uh, RV.
Okay, cause they did, they did a big chunk. Yeah, they did a big chunk that on the other side, where all that stuff's being developed now, and they came and got all of that approved.
So basically what happens then is then they come in and like to the mosquito board and say, hey, we wanna do an RDA. So they say, we'll continue to give you like what you're getting for property taxes right now, but once we be, build Sierra. We get all the increase for like fifteen or twenty years, so all that growth and property taxes then goes into the RDA. So then we can use that to pay for roads and signage, or maybe like sometimes it's just an incentive to the developer.
Sell, and they make it, boatload of money.
Yeah, it's true sometimes.
That's all the districts, it's okay, because they pretty much say, well, if you don't do this, we don't come in, and then you're not getting anything anyway.
Any increase, right, right, and so it works out good for like the city too, cause we get that big development. And so then we don't really get any property tax increase till the RDA area expires, but then in like fifteen years, hopefully it's went up a ton. And then we get more property tax too, and more sales tax along the way, hopefully. So, so that's the CDA, the sewer fund, um, so you can see we got more money in there than, than some of our other funds. The interest is up quite a bit, Central Weber, um, is proposing an eight percent increase this year. So it's different for every entity, because they do it upon assessed value and stuff, but that's about what it worked out for Far West. So we could do an eight percent increase in revenues if you want. I've looked at this fund and we're really in pretty good shape, like our revenues right now. Um, so you can see our total revenues without a fee increase is one point six for the year. Our expenditures with two hundred and fifty thousand worth of capital expenditures is one point three. So the fund's really in pretty good shape, so if you guys would like to do an increase, we can, so that we kinda like hold the line. But I think we're okay if you, you guys don't wanna do an increase this year to let this one slide and then look at it again next year. Um, it's up to you guys, so the only change I really made is in the wages and benefits, and then an increased offset, Central Weber.
Um, so we're not going to do. Something, let's wait till.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, this fund isn't like we can go out and just, I mean, it, it's always stayed pretty healthy. So I agree, I mean, I don't see a reason to increase what we charge everyone if we're covering it and meeting the needs of it. I would say just, yeah, we'll take that and wait another year like Lloyd said.
So I'm a special fund revenue here, um, it's the, it's a four hundred and eighty-seven, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, why, so what can that be used for, and then why, why is it there, why are we, are we sitting on it?
Which line item are you saying? The sewer reserve funds.
The special fund revenue.
The unappropriated fund balance.
That is just like a heading for these different accounts, so the unappropriated fund balance and these reserves, these are some rollovers. And so that's just money that we're rolling over to the next year, um, to offset some of this stuff.
Okay, and then there was no cost of living increase with this, as salaried employee?
So it depends on, I looked at all these, and we must not have needed an adjustment, I'll double check that one to make sure that I didn't miss something. When I punched in the, um, amounts. when I punched in the, um, amounts. I put together a big spreadsheet to make sure I get all those. So I might have just forgot to update those numbers. I'll check it. But the main change there is just what Central Weber is going to charge us.
And then this one will look different because it's like we, we're netting positive on this fund that we're in. Is this one we can roll over?
That is, I'll probably adjust that swing that out to zero in the final budget, but any of the enterprise funds, we should be operating as a business and have a profit motive. So it's just fine.
I mean, it's just like what we just did with, um, our dump fees and stuff is.
Exactly.
They told us this is how much we're charging you, but we set a rate so that we could stay ahead of that. So technically we would be slightly ahead, but then we can evaluate it next year so that we're not every year increasing it. We're kind of staying.
Right.
That's kind of how this is. This is just the business side of it. And so like you say, we, we're getting an eight percent increase from the sewer district, but we're still sitting well enough that then we don't have to pass that on to the citizens. But normally we would because there's no reason to go negative on that fund.
Right, right. Um, so storm water, if you remember last year, we did, we doubled the rate. So I think our rate's still great. Um, and we're just fine. I wouldn't propose an increase. It does look like we're spending more here, but it's because Robbie has those couple of big projects. I think he's talked to you guys about that that he has coming. And so we've got a little extra money sitting in there. Um, but that's the main changes in that fund.
Was that storm water?
That is storm water.
Oh, um, on the inspection fees?
Mm-hmm.
Why are we, why do we have that?
Because I don't, oh, you know what? I don't know. We haven't had a budget sitting there. We can put some money in there. I think it's because it fluctuates year to year. Um, I can.
Oh, and yeah, you did, it looks like you didn't budget anything for us.
So I can budget some money there.
Well, I don't, I don't have a preference to it. It's just.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
We know, we don't inspect things.
Right. Because I look at last year's budget and that's where I start. And so then, um, I go from there. Sanitation. So I know we just talked about that. Like I know you guys have met a bunch with econ waste. The one thing, so the transfer station's going up thirteen percent. And I think they actually already went up thirteen percent. I think we did it as of like May or June, right?
So we're already off is what you're saying?
Yeah. And so then with the econ waste fuel surcharge, what I would probably recommend is we just do a thirteen percent increase in that rate.
Question I had though is is the numbers we were looking at. It was like four to five dollars a gallon and now it's down into the threes. So is that really going to be as high as we thought?
I don't know. And everything, it, I guess it depends on what you think is going to happen this summer. Cause this is, and.
Diesel was super high mainly because of like a plant that was down or something. I can't remember. So I don't know if they're going to be going back up as high.
Diesel's, diesel's lower than gas for the first time.
Do you remember what their rates were on that chart?
If that was, if, if it went over four, if it went over five, there was different incremental.
Yeah, cause.
I just wondered, because I know we picked kind of the higher one to set our rate. So I was just curious, how far off do you think we're going to be?
I don't know. And so that's where I was like, well, maybe we ought to just do the thirteen percent increase and, and sit there.
We were going to charge ten.
I think so.
Lower than almost any other city.
Yeah, I, there's some of the other cities, they're.
Lancy just went like, yeah, they just went up a ton. I talked to.
A dollar thirty-seven per.
Yeah, so it's not much, but.
So that would be my recommendation and then just do the consolidated fee schedule change at the time and then we can see where we're at next year. And if we need to adjust them, we can. But trying to figure out like the ratio between econ waste and the transfer station, it's like, it might be easier just to, and the fuel surcharges, just say, go thirteen and we'll see where we're at. Um, so that's why all of these increase is just because of that thirteen percent offset.
And then shouldn't the like garbage can sales revenue and expenditures net each other out?
They, yes, in theory, yeah. Some of these, sometimes I believe these are done under like warranty and stuff. And so that's why. And so that's why they don't match. And then there's timing differences.
Twenty-five bucks instead of a hundred.
The cost of a can, or like a blue can?
Yeah.
If someone replaces it, we're eating like seventy-five percent of the cost of the can.
Which is like a hundred and, right. So we're eating like a hundred and forty bucks or something on our replacement can.
Are we charging full price for replacement?
Because sometimes it's the truck that brings the.
Yeah, it's not always them. It turns, yeah, we've had a big fight. We had a big discussion about that because usually it's, hey, they dropped my can and cracked it. I need a replacement. And you have that big fight of do we charge them the whole thing or do we charge them a portion?
Prove who broke your can, right?
So that's what I would suggest here. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts, if you're okay with that, if you want something different, I can change it for the final budget.
The only reason I was asking is I know we had rounded up higher, like it came out of like ten something and we just bumped it up. So I didn't know if we kept it rounded to some even increment, like the closest fifty cents or the closest dollar handleable thing.
And we can do that.
Like I said, we're charging you ten dollars and forty-eight cents.
Right.
Oh, yeah. That would be my only recommendation.
I don't know.
Round it to the nearest fifty cents or dollar.
And that's up to you guys. I don't know if that's easier.
Round it to that nearest dollar mark.
Yeah, dollar or half dollar.
Okay.
Or whatever. Yeah.
Okay, I'll go really quick just through this last. So the end, if you remember, so we've got the contribution here. We've got the money to replace those trucks that we're rotating and the new plow truck. Um, and that's just what we talked to you about there a couple of months ago when we talked about that first list. And these are all grossed up. We'll obviously get most of that money back. So this is kind of the offset to those. Um, so that's the capital asset.
We're, we're still in a meeting here, so.
And then here's the capital projects fund. Um, so we just have a little money. I left a little money everywhere. So in case when we bid that, it's more that we have some money or if we have any change orders. So I left a little a hundred thousand dollars for the public works facility in here and then.
That generator expense, do we need to expand that and purchase that?
I think we've just left some money there. So if they have ongoing maintenance.
Generators in place, so it's probably what was left over. I don't think, I don't know the generator that we need to replace right now.
I don't.
And that wouldn't pay for even a portion of it.
No, I think we've got money here for ongoing maintenance. If they wanted to do that, a lot of times with those generators, you do like an annual assessment on them and like change the antifreeze and oil. And so then if there's something bad, we got a little money. So, and that's the capital projects fund. So that's really everything that was in the tentative. So. Okay.
Good to know we're sitting good and healthy and.
Everything like I was a little nervous, but it worked out really well. I felt like so.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Let's shake our, uh.
Actually. I have no idea. Yeah, she's like, whatever that was typed in, she goes, I remember typing it, skipping the next person. She's like, I'll just go back and fill that in. And she's like, I don't know what it was. This one was not working, so one of these two. Thanks for helping the bar. Like, we live in that neighborhood too. And he lives in the neighborhood too and he's my boss. And he's like, just give the bar. Do what?
If this.
Yep, we got those last night.
Do you have one now or, there was, there was six up there.
Oh, man.
Four eighty-four.
All right. Anything notable on the? People start attaching the little microphones like.
Sorry, I should have grabbed some.
There you go.
I went there and I didn't even grab.
Did you get a water?
I'm sure mine. Not so long.
Right.
I love it. She's a team stuff, they should be, you're right.
You need water?
No, I got one.
Okay. Good, I didn't get your water. We do the pleasure.
Me? Yes.
Okay, Janelle, who you pray for is, we, we need help.
What?
We need help.
I don't know if I'm going to ask, but I'll try.
Thank you. I would like to, to, I can propose it. I need to commission. And it happens to be seven more of us. I realize the moment we could come out and leave. Yeah, so they would go up thick. It's just sort of, you know, I think you don't around that, but it costs a lot. And so like, maybe you did that before, uh, leads or. We were ahead of what they did like it does, you know, they kind of hit us, hey, like, if we didn't own that earlier. Right. Yeah, but, but they, but they have their. Maybe take advantage of it, maybe do some things to get. I've, I've talked to Tine, but not listening before.
Not yet. Now we are.
Okay, let's bring this meeting to order. Um, here it is, uh, Thursday, May eighteenth, seven PM, city council meeting. Hopefully everybody's got their mics on.
Yep.
Okay, help president accounted for. And also I ask anybody, uh, in the audience, when you, if you want to talk, please come up and to the, because we like to have everything recorded, identify yourself and then we can speak on things. So if it's above and beyond, uh, any of these other agenda items. So we're going to start off with a opening ceremony with a pledge and a prayer. Katie's going to lead us in the pledge and Janelle's going to pray for us.
Please write. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our father in heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day to meet together as a city council and as residents. And we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here and, and work with, with the residents and the city and developers to make this a great place to live. We're thankful for, um, all the, all that our residents do and our employees and, um, everyone to keep the city moving and to to contribute to our quality of life. We're thankful for, um, the water that's receded. Please bless those who are having issues and please help us to know what's best for the city and to act accordingly and, and with respect. And we say it's in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Katie and Janelle. Okay, uh, comments and reports. First thing is public comments. Here's your opportunity to come up and address the council if you choose to. Anyone? Anyone? No one. Okay, moving on. Report from planning commission. Madam Chair?
You got it. It's been a long time since I've heard that. Okay, um, we had a couple of big things last week. We held the work session and reviewed, um, the final drafts of the landscape ordinance that Liam reviewed and gave his okay. So in a couple of meetings, you'll see that come before you guys. Um, on that, we started our discussion on the M one zone and allowing certain uses and restructuring it like Lyle asked for permission last time. Um, then we held a public hearing for, well, a public hearing and approved to come to you tonight. Um, a conditional use permit request from Black Pine for fifteen hundred west, twenty-three fifty north, which is an M one zone. And we moved it forward because we believe that the restrictions we put on the M one zone were significant enough that there wasn't anything we could really think of that we would add to a conditional use permit from there.
There's no additional conditions?
Uh, no, no condition or no additional conditions. That is correct. Um, then we, um, did, we approved them, well, we did a preliminary approval for their site, or sorry, not site plan subdivision only. Um, to come before you tonight. And they still have some final will serve letters or availability letters and a couple of things to work out before final. But for subdivision only, not site plan. Uh, then we held another conditional use public hearing and moved forward to you tonight for triad land development at twelve forty-six North Two Thousand West. Um, this one had some lengthy discussion about the conditional use permit. And we put a condition on this conditional use permit that as long as it stays the current business proposed, which is a light manufacturing nuts and bolts business. And Jordan can correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as it stays that business, they do not need to come back before us. Um, but if that changes, the conditional use permit needs to come back before us and get approved again for the new business. So hopefully that makes sense. Um, then we set a public hearing for a rezone on eighteen hundred north and twelve hundred west, which will come before us next week from A one to C two for a small cellular tower that they're just, um, kind of parse, they're taking a portion of it basically away from the Browns to be able to own their cell tower. So. And that's it. A reminder of our joint work session next week for the patio home ordinance. Is there any questions on any of the things I mentioned today?
Um, a couple for you. The preliminary approval for the Ben Lomond Business Park subdivision, it wasn't the, those like will serve letters weren't for the subdivision, they were for the site plan, right?
They go hand in hand. I'm not sure who they were for, but they would need them for both.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, I sent the planning commission just that, um, link to Wasatch Front Regional Council for the ordinance assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was wondering, I hadn't heard from anyone and it, I was wondering if we wanted to put in for that for the, the M one and C two update that we were looking to do.
I read it and I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Let me read through it.
Something that you want to do, just let me know and we can put in.
The M one, when we reviewed it in the last work session, it's pretty simple. We just need to decide what uses we would like and feel that are comfortable in there that we don't need to necessarily have a conditional use permit for. Um, but in looking at our surrounding cities, all of them are pretty much the same. So we need to create a table and do some things there, but it was a little easier than we thought, actually. So.
Right, you're going to have a table like, these are permitted.
Yeah.
These are not, these are conditional.
The C two one might be a little bit more of a challenge because that conditional use becomes a little, especially in the certain zones that we have that in. especially in the certain zones that we have that in, where you have some residential closer on this side, but the commercial uses up here aren't located closer to the residential. So we might need some assistance on that one. So, but I'll look into that, I'm sorry, I didn't respond to you.
Oh, no, no problem.
Anything else?
Can you, before next week's joint work session, can you send out the latest copy of that?
Yep, and we didn't, um, it's just bullet points. So I need to update from our latest one, and then it's just bullet points of the five sections we chose relative to, um, density, open space, parking requirements, things like that. And we just kind of put, here's what we'd like, we haven't even done a draft of it yet.
That's great, I just want to make sure I have the latest stuff.
Yeah, Lou's been on me about that, too.
Don't have a conversation about it, right?
Oh, I'll have it to you.
Don't, don't leave yet.
Oh, yeah, you guys switched this one up, now I'm up for assignments.
Well.
I've got enough assignments.
I understand that, but it used to be at the end of the agenda.
I like you putting it after this one.
Why not just while you're here?
I like it.
Okay, is there anything further we want to, um, have the planning commission go off and do? Okay, I, I've got something and we talked about this.
Okay.
Um, basically to, uh, assign each commissioner a neighboring city or county. Then, then, as their assignments, because you guys go through assignments, and I think most of the time, nobody has anything on their assignments.
Been a little bit better, but yeah.
Yeah, but, and then they can report on what they're doing. And I went through each of those and actually there happens to be, and you'll be happy about this, there are seven entities. There's eight of you.
Okay, okay.
So that means, you know, you can delegate these out unless you want one of them, right? But.
Good to the last month or two, working on the new zones or new ordinances, because it's forced us to pull and say, hey, you need to go pull up this city's ordinance, you need to review this one, you need to. So it's forced us to get into the, some of that, so that'll be a great step.
And, and, and the thing about this would be, it'd be nice to know what they're up to so that we know, especially if it's going to impact us. You know, and so it's Pleasant View, Plain City, Merritt Sladeville, Harrisville, Ogden, because we do, you know, it's not a lot, but they're right there. Uh, of course, Weber County and even Box Elder County, those are the seven entities.
And I always like, and Lou hates this, I always like to add West Haven, because they're one of the few cities that has a full-time planner, full-time engineer, full-time staff there.
Okay, well, that makes it eight then.
Ahead of some of the other cities. So anyways.
Okay, so.
I will get on that next meeting, I will assign that.
I appreciate that, so I think that's it for assignments and direction for planning commission, you're doing great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to consent items, consider approval of minutes dated May fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes dated May fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Hey, Boyd and Katie, because they're the closest. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Consider approval of bills dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion when we pay the bills.
I'll second.
Katie and Janelle are motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Business items. Consider approval of business license, mile nine vinyl LLC Tyler Peterson is, come on up. Fill us, fill in the blanks for us.
Uh, so I'm a full-time software engineer at Hill. I'm starting a business on the side and, uh, did my own fence at my house and figured I'd start a business on the side.
You did such a good job, you thought I can make my own fence.
Job, but I, I learned the, the what not to do and what to do, so.
And it's not software engineering?
Well, it's, uh, it's just to have some, some.
I, I say that because that's what I do as well.
Oh, really?
And me, so you're among friends.
Fellow nerds. Okay, any, any questions for the applicant?
Just my soapbox of, um, this, you can't change your residence. So you're, you're in a residential neighborhood. And, but, you know, we all deserve to have a residential neighborhood, not a business in there, so make sure that, you know, vehicles are behind, out of the way, no signage. It's a residence, so just remember that.
Right, right. Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion if there are no further questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, business license for mile nine vinyl LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second by Boyd and Josh. Uh, we'll do this roll call, Janelle.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
There you go.
Good luck.
Unanimous.
Anything else from me?
Uh, no, just come get your business license.
I think they send it.
I think they email it out.
Email it out. Or so high-tech, we just.
Yeah.
I bet there's software for that somewhere.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item, set a public hearing for June first, twenty twenty-three to consider the request to vacate a public utility easement for Riley Grange located at twenty-one oh nine west, nine hundred north. Is Riley here? Come on up, in case they have any questions for you. Like, why are we vacating your public easement or utility easement?
So I'm just building a accessory building, a garage, my property. And I'm, uh, five feet is the public utility easement. And I'm just hoping to go to the four foot.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
Size of your building, what type of building you're building and size of it?
Uh, pole barn, fourteen feet high, twenty-four by thirty-six.
Is that one going to need conditional use? Do we? Have you talked to the building?
I don't think so.
Just make sure you follow the, the codes.
Okay, so he doesn't need a, it's not that big. It's big, but not that big, so, okay.
I, my only question is, and I see all your letters, you've got everything, but I don't know if like optic loop is in your area, it's another fiber optic, only because we have them when we cut through their line, when we did our sprinklers.
Yeah, they did mine, too.
Okay, so I don't know if we need a letter from.
Well, Connext was in that list.
Yeah, Connext.
I did have Connext on there.
Yeah, optic loop is.
Oh, optic loop, sorry, I was thinking.
Oh, is there another one?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't think they're servicing anyone, though. Here.
They, they have some.
Yeah, they have me.
Oh, you're on optic.
Yeah. But I don't know, like, if they.
Don't, don't cut Janelle's internet.
Just double check, you know, because that letter's actually for, you know, when we finally do it, just make sure that.
Just make sure.
If they serve your area, make sure that they're, we know where it is. You probably know whether they came through or not.
Yeah, I don't think they have.
Did you get two trenches in your front yard?
Just the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they like are right by each other, but.
Yes.
Anyway, just an FYI, you might want to check.
It's, it's better to be safe than sorry. Okay, I will entertain a motion on setting the public hearing.
I'll make a.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for June first, twenty twenty-three to consider the request to vacate a utility easement for Riley Grange.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Katie, second by Josh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three oh three indicating the intent of Faraway City to adjust a common boundary with Merritt Sladeville City. Um, before we get too far into this, I think some of you may remember we did this once. Um, we're doing it, huh?
Twice? Didn't we do this twice?
Well, this is at least twice, I don't know if we did it, I think, I know we did it at least one time fairly recently, and the reason why it's back on our plates is because apparently somebody didn't get it to the lieutenant governor's office in time. And there's a shock clock that goes off and, uh, time expired, and so they had to start over again, basically. So here we are. How do you guys feel?
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number two oh two three dash oh three, uh, indicating the intent of Faraway City to adjust the common boundary with Merritt Sladeville City.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Josh are motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we roll call on a resolution?
Oh, it's a resolution. Yeah, one time I didn't do a roll call, huh? Dave?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle? Okay, thank you, and I think we still have some more work to do as well, don't we?
We do, in fact, uh, within sixty days, we have to do the public hearing. If we can schedule it to be on June fifteenth, if we're going to have a meeting scheduled that day, it will keep us right on track with Merritt Sladeville City as well, so that Bill Morris and I can keep track of the time restraints on all of these steps. If we do it all together, it just makes it easier. So if we're going to have a meeting on June fifteenth, if we can schedule the public hearing for June fifteenth, it would just make it easier.
Okay, and.
This is the first step.
Set that now or put it on next time's agenda?
Uh, next time's, well, you can do it right now if you want, to set the public hearing.
It doesn't have to be on our agenda to do so?
Isn't it on the agenda to do so?
Not to set the public hearing.
Oh, well, okay, we'll do it next time, but that's fine. If we, if we can figure it out and get it for June fifteenth, if not, we'll still have time to do it, I'll work with Bill Morris, but.
We'll have it, because we will be meeting on June first.
Perfect.
And then we'll set it then.
Yeah, so then we'll have to have a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, we have to get all of our resolutions and documents in order, signed with Merritt Sladeville and get them sent to the lieutenant governor's office.
And hopefully in time, right, this time.
Well, I understand, they're paying for this whole process, right?
As far as I know, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is consider approval of the request of a conditional use permit in the M one zone for the Ben Loman Business Park located at fifteen hundred west, twenty-three fifty north for assembling light indoor manufacturing, packaging, processing, research, development, and warehousing. Did they leave anything out? There's no name on here, we have a representative from, I believe, Black Pine Group to answer any questions.
Yeah, Daniel Stevens with the Black Pine Group.
Thanks for coming, are there any questions?
I think the planning commission did a good job kind of vetting out this whole.
Did they run them through the?
They did, several times.
Did it work?
They, they asked some great questions, right, Geneva?
Okay.
It was good, it was a good process.
But they made it clear, right, what?
Yeah, no, great process, so. Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit in the M one zone for the Ben Loman, uh, Business Park.
I'll second.
Boyd and Katie are motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
But don't sit down yet.
Yeah, we're on the next one, too.
Okay, consider preliminary approval of a Ben Loman Business Park subdivision located at fifteen hundred west, twenty-three fifty north. Any questions on this? I think it's just turning it into two pieces on each side of the road, right?
Yes.
The proposed road.
That's right.
Can you remind me what the differences between preliminary approval and final approval, Geneva?
So preliminary can have items on the engineers' or the engineers' memo, we have a few items. And then final, it needs to be clean memo, they need to have all those terms, they need to have all, all of it together.
And when will that, when does that typically?
That's their timeline, so they can be on our next meeting for final if they clean it up.
Okay, but they can't do anything until final?
Right.
Okay.
It's, at the time we came to the process, we didn't have the final Bonavista letter. We do have it now, um, and we're waiting on one, there's three irrigation ditches we're crossing on that road. We're still waiting on approval from one on the sizing of their box covert, so.
Yeah, that's what happens when you build on former farm property, you might find a ditch.
Yeah. We've had, we've had a few.
I'm sorry, because ours city allow, or makes them go through four total meetings, so two preliminary, two final, one city council each, um, we allow them to go forward a little faster, so it's not such a line-up process.
Okay, thanks, thanks for explaining that, I'm still figuring out how the process works. Um, I'll make a motion that we can, we preliminarily approve the Ben Loman Business Park subdivision at fifteen hundred west, twenty-three fifty north.
Okay, Katie and Janelle are motion and second. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Sorry, Dave, you were just a little bit behind on.
He's a little timid down here today.
Okay.
And it's like the twenty.
Okay, consider approval of the request of a conditional use permit on the C two zone for triad land development located at twelve forty-six North two thousand West for light indoor manufacturing with associated retail sales and warehousing. We have a representative, come on up. Come on down.
Good evening.
And answer any questions, do we have any questions?
You, you understand what Geneva was talking about as far as the, you know, this is for this business and.
I do, only question I'll ask to that, Boyd. Geneva put that restriction specifically on the north, we're, we're going to subdivide this. Uh, the north parcel is the one we're requesting the conditional use permit for light indoor manufacturing. The business is Avex, Matt Chugg's business, many of you know him. Uh, and that's why we've requested the light indoor manufacturing. For the south property, we are asking for the ability to recruit tenants that would possibly be in the warehousing, which you guys define as a conditional use. The language is warehousing with at least twenty-five percent floor space for office use. In commercial real estate, this is considered flex space. And so we would request that we wouldn't have to come in every time we get a potential tenant that may have that use, understanding that for the light indoor manufacturing piece, it would be exclusive to just Avex on the north property.
I, that's my fault, I apologize. In our motion, that is included, I'm sorry. It does say that he is allowed the flex space with twenty-five percent, um, office space in it. So I'm sorry, I forgot, I left that out. So he is right, yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Questions?
So do we need to do anything like administratively to, or is it, that was included in your?
That was included, sorry, yes, in our motion, it included one business on the north and then allowing the flex space with the requirement of twenty-five percent office space in there.
In the, like, because there was like three of them, so it was just for the north parcel, not that bigger one on the south, right?
The bigger, yeah, so the bigger parcel is the one on the south, the, the bigger single building is the one on the north that will have the light indoor manufacturing.
It initially included the whole properties, and that's how we broke it down.
Yeah, and I believe when we make this motion, we should mention those conditions so that it's actually part of the motion.
So that, that would apply for all three of the units that you're, there's two units.
Yeah, there's three buildings, the three buildings, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I can read the actual.
And I have a drawing if that's helpful, but, you should probably have it.
It's just good when we actually approve this, that we've included those things.
Please, it'd be great.
It was flipped upside down, that's why I'm so confused.
Oh, no worries.
The north is backwards. So that's why, okay, that's why you were looking at me strange.
Yeah, it is upside down, right?
All right.
Well, I guess it's all in how you look at it, right?
I mean, whatever. Well, and I was wondering when I was looking at, I was like, why is there no access? Because I was thinking that was two thousand, so. Um, yeah, I'd just like to impress, um, yeah, those conditions that, that the planning commission, um, placed on you.
Yes.
Are you walking to give you the motion?
Yes. Are you going to be making a motion, Katie, or?
I'll make the motion if you, yeah.
So read, read based on that, that helps you.
I was just saying, I want to impress that if that tenant falls through with that one unit that you do have to come back through and get another conditional use.
Yep. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of a conditional use permit uh, in the C two zone for triad land development located at twenty, twelve forty-six North two thousand West. I'm going to put this in there for light indoor manufacturing with associated retail sales and warehousing. And then it'll probably duplicate this a little bit, sorry, Andrea, but, uh, for light indoor manufacturing with associated retail. Will be fasteners for the north building, and if it should change, they will need to come in for an additional conditional review and light ma, um, and light manufacturing and warehousing with twenty-five percent office space on the south building.
Buildings, probably.
Buildings, okay.
Yeah, plural, yeah.
Does that cover it?
I think so.
Great job, boys.
Save them the day, guys.
Killed it.
That's, that's, that's the motion.
Yeah, can I add one thing?
Yes.
In the event that the north building did not go through, and for whatever reason, Matt Chugg and Avex do not occupy it, our plan is to build the same type of space that we have on the south on the entire parcel. So I assume that would carry over should we end up getting rid of that north project and absorbing it into the south project, does that make sense?
For the parcel, is the way I understand it, so, okay.
Yeah, you can just make it for the parcel, as long as the twenty-five percent is.
Still applies.
So maybe taking your motion, Boyd, to say that the flex space with the twenty-five percent office space can be project-wide.
Thanks, sorry, you know how things can fall through in real estate, so trying to.
Get that, Andrea.
Save us all some time.
So if this is attached to a parcel and then they subdivide and now there's a different parcel number, would that affect?
Does it affect their motion?
Does it affect the conditional use permit? Because it's, it's attached to a parcel.
Yeah, but is the conditional use permit only describing this piece of land by the parcel number?
No, by, by the address, which will also probably assign a new address.
So if it's only describing this piece of land by the parcel number, then yes, but if there is an address to go with it, that we could use, if we find.
And if it changes, it just has to be attached to it.
You're right.
Yeah, and we also won't subdivide if the, if the project isn't going, is going to fall through. All these things are somewhat preliminary so that we can assure that the projects.
You're saying there's a conditional on the conditional permit on whether you subdivide it or not?
Geneva's words earlier, conditional, conditions on the conditional use.
I think my motion stands.
No, you need to say it all over again.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Janelle, seconded it.
I think I know what I'm seconding, yeah.
Okay, David.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Janelle.
Aye.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Come to the mic. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I, I put these guys through the wringer a little bit, but this is a really good example of why conditional uses come after subdivision and site plan, not before. It solves a lot of problems when they come after and we know businesses and it's been subdivided like she's bringing up, and the site plans have been approved. So I really, you know, I'm not apologizing. I stand behind the stuff I did, but, I mean, it's hard when a conditional use comes before a project because a lot can change, so I just want to note that, that.
So why did you guys approve it or recommend it?
We're good citizens, but it's just, we, we had to ask a lot of questions and we had to vet a lot of things to get them through this. So it's a good example of why it comes after the process.
Geneva, from what I understand too, from the meetings, is it's really hard for the developers to advertise a space that they don't have a conditional use for. They can't build a space and then say like, oh, well, actually that can't come in.
Parts and horses, chickens and eggs.
Yeah, so.
Hence why we're looking at the zone again.
Revisiting the M one.
Exactly, to allow a little bit ease of ease for that and it'd be easier.
We're solid on what's permitted and not.
Yep, exactly. To clean those up and then this process would flow a lot easier, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay. We're almost done. Just kidding.
They don't want to listen to the, and, and one more thing. Sorry, Mary. Yes. Absolutely. Come on up.
And this, this might require a, a motion to reconsider. But on that boundary adjustment with Marriott Sladeville City, just reviewing the code here. And when we pass the resolution for our intent to do a boundary adjustment, we need to actually have that resolution. The resolution does have a place to insert the time. We're going to have the public hearing, so that needs to occur.
Okay.
And so I think it's fine. We didn't notice it as we're going to be scheduling a public hearing because there, that resolution does indicate a blank in it where there is a necessary spot to put in a date.
Of that resolution.
Yes, as part of that resolution.
Okay.
So if, if, if the council is amiable to making a motion to amend or to reconsider.
Um, I will consider a motion to reconsider, where was that? Um, C, to reopen that or?
I'll make a motion to, can I?
Readdress.
Rea, amend the, um, approval of, uh, resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash zero three.
Andrea, who made the motion? I'll, I'll second that.
And then. Now where do we go?
Well, I, I think we should like basically back off, make the motion.
Yeah, so now you're back to this item, so now you can make a motion to approve and set the date.
We're amending.
Set the motion.
Yes, motion to reconsider. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're reconsidering C.
I will make a motion to consider the approval of resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash zero three with the intent of Far West City to adjust a common boundary with Marriott Sladeville City and then set a public hearing for June fifteenth at seven?
Seven P M, I guess is our regular time, right?
I'll second that.
They are making us work for our money tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, Katie and Boyd are motioning second. Janelle.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Thanks.
Thanks for keeping us straight. That's all right. Yes, we are. We're good. Thank you. All right, uh, let's see, we're back down to report on assignments. Who should I pick on first? Let's start with Dave.
Okay, so, um, the only thing I've had so, uh, in the last couple of weeks is, um, mosquito abatement meeting. We are going to see more mosquitoes this year. They're starting to see a lot heavier traffic already. But they've also been out working and applying and, and doing a lot more work than they typically do at this time of year, so they're ramping up on that. And then, um, Commissioner Harvey gave a quick update on the water situation with where we're at, and so I took some notes and started. Had them in my mind that night, but I, I'm just going to read them now. Uh, essentially, all the work that we've done since twenty seventeen in the county and in cities has really helped with the flow of, especially like the Weber River. They're able to handle a lot more water downstream in the Plain City area and west from there that they've been able to handle in the past years, and so he said that in the past, the, the breaking point was around, uh, three thousand cubic feet per second and let, when that meeting was happening, he said it was already at forty-three hundred that day, so quite a bit more water, but it's handling it. The issues I think we've all seen with Ogden River, um, washing out some of the road, et cetera. They're still trying to let a lot of water down though, because there's still one and a half times, um, enough water to fill that reservoir. Causey's already spilling, so it's full and spilling. And there's still one and a half times amount of water to fill Pineview, but it's already, it was already forty percent full as of that date. So that's why they keep running that river as high as they can to get rid of, get as much water downstream as they can. And then really, I think the other big thing to note was that, uh, Willard Bay is, was at eighty percent already, and there was still, uh, I think what he said was like sixty-two inches of water on the back of Ben Lohman, still to come down. So, yeah.
Spilling out of Willard Bay as well.
Are they? No? Wow, yeah. Yeah, and he said all this is, he said all the, the gates at the, um, uh, at the Waterfowl Preserve, that's what I call it, um, are open and spilling to the Salt Lake, so, uh, that's why, you know, it's, everything's working as designed. The, I mean, yeah, we've had issues here and there, but, uh, really reasonably has been good considering the amount of water we've been dealing with, so that's it.
Yeah, I know, like on the road in Ogden Canyon, if you look at some of the, the pictures of it, one of the reasons it washed away, if you look at the structure of it, that's from that old rock buildup, you know? From Clearback in the day, and it doesn't take much to wash away rocks.
No, well, and then you think about what, you know, North Ogden Divide has been like with all the water that's been pushing out from there, and they've had landslides up there as well, and, but anyway, considering everything we've been going through, it's, it's all.
Our West City has been in good shape. Once we got past groundwater, we haven't, I've been watching.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. What do you got, Josh?
So, um, we met as a long-term planning committee on the sewer board, and in our meetings the last couple of months, um, developments out west of Twelfth Street have been one of the big topics, which, um, recently the sewer board has made the decision that they will serve that area. Um, but now we have developers and other stuff that want to build there. And so a lot of discussions have been about who's going to do that infrastructure. Right now, the county and the developer is going to pay for most of that or all of it. Um, whether or not the sewer board takes over maintenance, so that's kind of been a big thing. I'm also talking about metering, um, that's been, some of the cities really want to see metering as something the sewer does as far as how much comes from our city versus other cities. As we've talked about that, that's really a tricky thing, and we don't see that actually as a big benefit like some people would. Um, because there's a lot more that goes into metering versus just, I mean, if you have a lot of infiltration and groundwater, your concentration of sewage is actually way low, which means you're not, it doesn't take as much to treat. So there's many more things than just metering, so something we talked about, and I don't think we're going to pursue it this time, and there's a huge cost to be a big amount of money to meter all the cities and stuff like that, so. Um, but everything else is going good over there. We, I've had a lot of discussions this last week about the Freedom Festival, trying to get some things together on that, and I guess the only thing that I want to bring up on, we're going to meet this next week, I think, Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, one, either Thursday, one of those two days.
Yeah.
Um, we heard back from the local Boy Scout troop. They did the breakfast last year. Um, they said they already just did a big, huge fundraiser and they don't want to do another one. So at this point, we really don't have anyone that wants to take over the breakfast, but I was talking with Lindsay, the thought was if there's a group in the city or community that would like that as a fundraiser, um, I think we're open to entertaining that, so if you guys know of anyone that would like that opportunity to take that on, let me know.
I know a nine, a nine-year-old little boy that just made the hockey travel team and his, they need to do some fundraising, so.
Anyway.
This is volunteer.
Make sure you think about that.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Be careful what you volunteer for in the council.
Anyway, so, uh, but yeah, the Freedom Festival will be the big thing coming up here in the next little bit, so.
That's at three on Wednesday?
Yeah.
I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Boyd?
Mine's pretty low-key. Um, we canceled the fire district board meeting, so that's not, uh, we didn't do anything there. I, I go in there every week to sign checks, but other than that, um, things are going well with our fire district. Um, there are some emails going back and forth to finish up the personnel policy, so we are working on that. Um, and other than that.
That's it?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Boyd. Katie?
So, a couple of things, um, Matt Robertson got me back the estimate, an estimate for the Ped Bridge, and who wants to take a guess?
Five hundred?
Eight hundred.
Two point four million.
Oh.
So, but that gives us a, uh.
A number.
Oh, and then with inflation, it'll be two point seven in two years, so, um.
So that included all site work, foundations, utility, all that kind of stuff, right?
Geotech, drainage, roadway, yeah.
I mean, I, that was one reason I was pushing for that all along. I mean, I think there's a re, a reason you don't see these kind of bridges all over the place, is they're not cheap structures, and so even with UDOTs, I mean, we're still sitting at a very large chunk of money.
Yep.
Well, that's good. He was able to put that together without a lot of time and stuff on.
Yeah.
His side, so.
Probably had another one to copy from, huh?
Probably, or close to.
And he did put it in like the format that UDOT and W F R C use for their grant applications, and so, um, I'll still move forward with putting, I know those, a lot of those come in the spring or at an end of year time, so I'll keep my eye on those and put in form.
Like a cost, like is a, a dollar amount of, um, what was his name? Miles was going to donate and put towards that project?
No, it was very ambiguous, so.
And really, all we have is.
Mostly incoming.
Yes, really, at this point, all we have is the five hundred thousand is all we have guaranteed.
Yeah, his was mostly material and engineering, I think, on what he had figured out.
Yep. Um, but the one thing that they did share with me, like, a lot of the, so like, we would need to do some like Radway acquisition with the like, with the city and with the school district and all of that can, even though it's, even though we're like paying ourselves, that can be considered in kind, that can be a match towards some of these grant funds and.
Including it like if the school gives us.
Yep. So, um, we've got a few, a few good options, and we'll just, I'll just put in for some things and see what comes out of it.
Okay, what else?
Oh, what else? Okay, um, ADA Doc got an update from Lyle on that. Um, he, um, he has Goliath starting to work on building the ramps for the pile installation. Um, so, um, got the estimate back from that, and then, um, it was a little higher than what we had put in the grant application, but, um, that grant that we received um, accounts for inflation, so he's going to get back with them to get that covered. And then he's working with Tom Berklin to get the engineering done on it, and so he is hitting the ground running and on, on that, and, um, just making some really good strides on that.
And we're going to put the pylons in June, starting June fifth.
Yeah, pile installation, June fifth, so, and for that, I think they have to come in and they have to remove some fencing to get the the pile, okay, we're not.
Yeah, they might fit.
Okay, so if you want to come watch some, uh, piles be installed, it's always a fun time. And, um, let's see, I think that is it.
That's all?
Yeah.
Nothing from the conference?
We did that last time.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
I hope that's not your list. That's giving you a hard time.
Janelle?
Okay, um, we didn't have a parks meeting, yes, what's today? Yeah, yesterday. Um, although I signed my sign up for fishing club and from firsthand experience, it's very well done. So, um, and then I had someone reach out to me about the bike park again.
This one?
Yeah, have we figured out the central point of contact for that?
We're having a meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, I have a name that he said that he could be the central contact. Anyway, I'll get with you. It's a parks thing. Um, went to Planning Commission last week. They did a work session on the commercial landscaping, um, and, oh, she is still here. I want to compliment the Planning Commission on really like taking this stuff and just getting through it and doing a great job and working together and like, it's been, it's been very enjoyable working with the Planning Commission on, um, their projects. And I missed legislative policy because the mayor texted me at one o'clock and asked if I was in, and I was like, uh, nope, so he'll have to report on that, and then, um, I do have questions about the parade, but I don't know if this is the place to ask them because it's not really a city assignment, so.
We can talk afterward.
The city parade, but yeah.
It is.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all, and, uh, yeah, now for my ten more things, since you're going to give me grief anyway. Okay, I'm starting off with, uh, WACOG, so I attended on Monday, the transport, or was it Tuesday? Transportation Subcommittee, my first meeting on the Transportation Subcommittee. Um, so this is where WACOG, you know, talks about funding and all that for all of these projects. Uh, one of them that happened was, uh, West Haven came in and they needed to amend their request for, uh, thirty-three hundred south on their phase two project. Uh, because of, uh, inflation, increased costs and all that, they basically are asking for up to eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars more for that project, so.
Eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
Yeah, up to. They think they can do it for five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. They are, um, contributing two hundred thousand towards it, so they are doing, they have their skin in the game, so to speak, on that, which kind of goes to the, uh, next piece where we discussed, uh, program policies, so there's a policy on all of these things, on these fundings and stuff. They are now making it required to have a ten percent match. Um, you know, usually people do have a match, but it hadn't been required to be a match. You got scored higher if you had a match, but now they want to make it, no, you're going to have ten percent match. So that's something, that twenty, ten percent is, um, can be a lot of money. If you have a million-dollar road, guess what? That means a hundred thousand dollars, and you know, you can do the math from there, so that's something that passed, and there are also some, uh, letters of intent that are due by June fif, fifth um, for any road projects, and so I actually had, um, Matt with our engineering, uh, he's going to put together a, a few letters, because one of them would be one that didn't go through last time. Basically thirty-three hundred north, phase two. They got phase one, but we didn't get phase two, so we're going to put a letter of intent in on that. And we also threw a couple of other ones together for letters of intent because just in case we need to. And we also threw a couple of other ones together for letters of intent because just in case we need to, uh, put in roads for the, I'll call it the associated loop. That would be the road that would connect, uh, from Roulan White around to, you know, the frontage road there around Associated. So, you know, if we, I think everybody agrees that having a road there isn't our, uh, general plan to have that. But if there's any, this funding is for several years out, so it's still going to be a while before that funding will become available. But if we need that money, we better put in some letters of intent if we're going to ask for any. Uh, the other one, I, I'm going to call this one the kidney connection. Cause over there by the kidney center, they're the, um, the new light there at Jimmy John's, you know, to go south from there and hook over to twenty-five fifty. Been talking with Public Works and, um, I guess Opikens has actually approached saying he'd like to, you know, do something there because that's going to open up some retail areas out in that area, which I think we would very much appreciate, which includes going over the canal and all that other kind of stuff. So there's some work and stuff to do there, but it could also help. And maybe we can approach, um, Old Dominion and Associated as well, because if this road were, um, truck worthy, that could also cut down on, you know, the loop around from, uh, you know, instead of going out to Roulan through the canyon in order, and I think we all know what the canyon is. We get to the end of twenty-five fifty. So that could loop that stuff around, plus open that up for, you know, um, commercial in that area as well. So, uh, that's another one. And then, um, another one that, uh, was at least brought up before, and we can at least put in the letter of intent, and that is roundabout at twelve hundred west, uh, Harrisville Road. Cause right now it's a four-way stop. Um, they've drawn something up before and they've actually shown that it can. And that might be something because, um, it does touch two other entities. It touches Harrisville and Ogden. So maybe we, that could be a part of that. So anyway, those are four letters of intent. You guys, we haven't put them in yet. What was that?
I was just thinking how that would work when Cameron Clark is letting out things like that where, you know, you can see southbound Roulan White filling up that entire roundabout for a time.
And not being able to get into it?
Yeah. Fifteen, twenty minutes. I could see that just being almost constantly full at certain times of day.
Well, that's the fun thing about roundabouts, that those things, types of things can happen.
Should flow better than a four-way stop.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing about roundabouts is they keep things, traffic moving through them. Instead of every stop, come stop, come stop.
So I thought I'd bring this up so that I can at least kind of get some, uh, feedback and either nods, letters of intent. That doesn't really, you know, that's all that is.
I think it's, it's a great way to start, man. So.
Except for those that don't know how to, well, it's, it's better than. Yeah. And it's better than the, the roundabouts in Washington DC. Cause at least here, if you're in it, you know, people have to yield before they go in. In DC, it's the opposite. If you're in it, you have to yield for those coming in.
Where would the road coming behind Associated connect? Is it this Hemingway Street?
Ben Lomond thing that we just talked about.
Yeah. Through this thing with this, that little road for the subdivision.
So it would come through here and come right behind there, right?
Yeah. Kind of skirts. I think, well, I've looked at it, it kind of connects like right over here.
It would actually swing south a little bit down and around. And actually that would. And I did get a, a, a call from Associated asking our interest in that because they're going to take it to their higher ups because they're considering doing some more as well. And hopefully they're going to like, maybe expand and or build a parking lot for their trucks. Okay. Cool. I'm going to continue on. So that was the, uh, Transportation Subcommittee. And yes, I did attend the LPC, the, uh, Legislative Policy Committee. Um, that was pretty interesting. I actually went in person for a change. Um, they basically, one of the things is, uh, with all this land use stuff that's going on and all this affordable housing, they have this new term, it's called CHA, C-H-A. So it's a committee of housing affordability. Okay? And so, and they're doing a, uh, a lot of legislative things right now, some, uh, you know, even though they just got done with the session, there's a lot of interim stuff already beginning for next year. And so they basically ask us to ask our legislatures, for legislators, for questions. So anytime they're coming up with things having to do with, um, housing and all that kind of stuff, uh, they want us to ask, how does the proposal preserve the quality of life of current and future residents? How does the proposed allocate the current and future costs and ensure the stain, sustainability of infrastructure? Uh, will the proposed result in more housing units that are more directly affordable to the buyer or renter? I mean, they talk about things being more affordable, but I think we all know that some of this stuff isn't more affordable to some folks. So, you know, the word affordable is kind of interesting in all of this. And the final question, will the proposed result in more homeownership? Because there's a whole lot of, a lot of things are being built and it winds up being a whole lot of renters. You know, that's how the market is right now. So those are the questions they've asked us as we speak with our legislators to ask them. Um.
Would you share that with all of us?
Absolutely. I'll give you the whole slide deck.
Those are really good questions.
Yes. Um, there are also, there are some work groups and, um, like a, I don't know. Maybe I'm an idiot, but I volunteered to, uh, be a part of some of these work groups. Uh, part of it has to do with the CHA, so that, you know, so that we're working on these things and also, uh, infrastructure funding. So there are some work groups having to do with infrastructure funding. It's good to be in the mix and know what's going on. Uh, talked with Cameron Deal for a little bit. He wants to come and visit our city council in the next little while. He wants to come and visit us and Plain City. So I need to get with John Beasley so that he can just do it in one trip. But he wants to discuss, uh, our needs and also our, I, uh, our needs as far as the roaming city manager option that the legislator, like legislature passed this last session. So. And that manager isn't a manager, so to speak. It's more of a advisor. At least that's how it's, they're, they're putting it down as. So, um, I think, I think you guys will be all right listening to him come in. He's a pretty interesting guy. Um, so on parks, yes, the pump track, uh, we're going to have a pump track. We're having a meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM. And like you said, there's several people interested. So if somebody wants to come and actually get started, then I got another thing that somebody else wants to get started. And I don't know if your contact is also somebody else who also wants to get started.
I just heard about it this week.
Okay, so.
But he was in contact with someone else who was involved and he kind of volunteered to be like, for like the bike team contact.
What I've heard is we got lots of people that want it and are interested. So.
Yeah. And they want to get started. So we're going to meet tomorrow morning and basically start organizing that. Let's get after it, you know? We might have enough people that can just grab shovels and get it done.
Is that meeting here or at the bike?
Yeah. We're going to stand right on the dirt and go and point at things. How's that? Um, you, you guys have probably noticed we're using, uh, this city park over here for soccer. Um, using that because the, the fields elsewhere are all flooded. We've had some, um, concerns about, you know, um, more traffic and more parking and all that kind of stuff, but I still think it was a good idea to allow them. These kids like to play soccer and they're, they, but they didn't sign up for, um, water polo, which is what it looks like in those, some of those soccer fields up in North Ogden and whatnot, because they happen to build a lot of, uh, soccer fields in retention ponds and detention ponds, right? And they're doing their job right now. So it's not good to play, uh, soccer in them. And as Katie already said, that Lyle secured the, uh, the grants, they're going to start on June fifth. And this Saturday, so a few days from now is our last fishing club session. I'll be cooking hot dogs. And today the DWR stocked the pond with a whole bunch of fish, eight hundred trout. So exciting there. So. Invite any of you want to come out and have a hot dog. Come on out, bring your fishing pole, get your license. I know Janelle's already going to be there because she's.
Oh, I forgot. I have a fundraiser thing on Saturday, so my husband's going to be there.
Okay. So you don't get any hot dogs?
Right. For breakfast. It's a shame.
But I will be sad to miss. I, I'm going to try to make it, but I think I have to meet it.
Okay. Well, come for as much as you can because it's just fishing and hot dogs. Um, code enforcement. So Liam sent me a draft agreement for, with Weber County. I haven't had a chance to look through it completely because I think I just got it today. So this would get Iris involved and all that other kind of stuff. We don't know fund or the amounts yet, how much it's going to cost. But, uh, we're getting enough. We updated the, um, um, the document that we have for complaints. Is, uh, one of the things that, uh, I want to do better, because I think they're also going to want this as we go through, uh, Weber County is they, they're going to know what are they in violation of. So I want, you know, basically what code are they violating? And also, uh, this is just something I threw on there because it's, okay, did you talk to your neighbor first? You know, doesn't hurt to ask. Did you talk to your neighbor first? So that's on the, uh, on that. Um, and Bonavista is, isn't till Monday. And, uh, one last thing I wanted to ask you, Liam, is, uh, we talked about this before. Uh, we need open meetings training. Can you help us put that together?
Absolutely. I agree with Lindsay and you can schedule that on one of your upcoming agendas.
Okay. And I, I think we need to, or should include the planning commission as well. You know, it doesn't have to take forever. I don't believe that. Um, and we can, and if it's not on a regular meeting, work session, whatever it takes. But, um, I think we're required to have this training. I know many of us get it through other entities, but you know, not all of us do.
We require that annually. If you would prefer another work session, I'm happy to do that, whatever you prefer.
Okay. We'll come up with the time and place if you're willing to be the teacher. Okay. And, uh, the only one more thing I have is, um, asking for a final motion.
Wait, I, I do have one more thing. I do. Please. And, and it's potentially a request for the planning commission, but, um, we are having major problems with roosters in the city. I, I think we need to look at our animal ordinance. I don't know why people need fifteen roosters or forty roosters and it's causing problems with the neighbors. And so.
Well, that's not even close to what's allowed. So it's not, it's, it's not an ordinance problem. It's the people violating the ordinance problem.
It's funny though, because.
They can have so many.
Yesterday I was on a soccer game, one of the people came up and asked the same thing about roosters. And I pulled up the calculator and stuff and it, yes, on too many chickens definitely, but there is no, I, did we not used to have an ordinance that said equally on one rooster?
That was my understanding. You could only have one.
Okay. That's what I think, I think we need to go back. There's no reason that, that.
So that's not in the calculator, but you checked the ordinance?
Uh, I didn't. I didn't have a calculator.
So I think Lindsay, Lindsay looked at the ordinance and could not find the word rooster.
Yeah.
I thought we had that.
I thought we did too.
Allowed one.
I remember we did, we, we redid the animal ordinance.
Yeah, but I was, I was involved when we redid it and, well, I guess you guys redid it again when you did the small animal.
Rooster fall out somehow?
So rooster, because I remember when we did it, we were specific. It was one rooster.
And that's where I was over that and then I looked it up and I couldn't find it.
I think, can we revisit that?
Yes.
And I think we need to do that expeditiously because this is, we have, we have people that aren't sleeping.
Yeah. So there, I, I did get a complaint and we've been addressing it and I'm less than happy about a couple, not how we've been responding. Because, um, both Boyd and I went to the house. They weren't home. We did leave them some information. We then, uh, with Liam's recommendations, uh, sent this all off to animal control. Animal control went over there, did discover that they had forty chickens on just under an acre, um, and a barking dog. So, you know, the neighbor would.
This is only one instance.
This is just, this is one of the loudest instances. So I got a report the other day that, okay, that barking dog is gone and they are now down to compliant on how many birds.
They now have fifteen birds and most of them are roosters.
Yeah. So it didn't take care of that part of the problem, but I think we've been taking care of what we can, going through the channels that we can in order to resolve this issue. And in that email that I got, um, they're very disappointed in Far West City. That, that was, uh, kind of, we've been trying really hard, going through all the right channels to take care of this as fast as possible. And they're still disappointed in it. So, yeah, they were going to come to city council. They're not here. I, I, but you know, um, but yes, I think that, uh, yeah, we could address that and make sure that, uh, there is something about roosters. And I wondered and I didn't get an opportunity to look because we also adopted Weber County's rules, right? That's in the ordinance that we, uh, uh, and I don't know what Weber County has.
Maybe there's a definition like it says, we say chickens and that's chicken hens and maybe rooster is.
To have in there very specific wording, but it was one.
Cause I remembered that too. And then when I looked it up, my.
Yeah. I don't know how that fell out.
Okay.
I, I thought that thing, same thing.
I'll ask the Lou too, because he had it that. So he may know why, maybe we did.
If you, if you would, I, I think it's important. I think we need to do it for our residents. I think that there, in my mind, there's no need to have.
Right.
That. So.
Okay.
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 Make a motion. We adjourn.
On favor? Adjourn. Thank you all. And you had one more thing. That's funny.
You had, you had two more.
You said one more thing twice.
Twice. Yeah.
Oh, I did.
Yes, you did.
I was going down through my list. I didn't take one.
One more thing and then I said, we did. You said it twice. Bless you a little hard. Goodbye.
Thank you. What am I going to do with you guys?